Bienvenidos, welcome. I call to order the study session of the Beaverton School Board on November 14th, 2023 at 5:45 PM. I want to note that we have six board members that are present. Susan Greenberg will be joining us shortly. And we have two topics for our study session tonight. A budget overview and also the forecast and the school staffing allocation methodology, which is often referred to as SAM. And actually, just before we begin, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the ongoing violence in the Middle East and the impacts that this and other conflicts are having across our world and that those impacts are actually being passed on to our students, our staff, our community, and to each of us. I myself have actually fled my home country at a young age after my own mother was held hostage for several weeks. I lived along with my family in one room of our home with mattresses on the walls to stop the bullets that entered our home. I saw people being massacred and could no longer go to school due to the unsafe conditions before coming to the US. I say this not to center my lived experience, but to express the deep sense of compassion I feel for our students, our staff, and community at this time. We are a district committed to creating a safe and welcoming learning environment for all of our students. If a student is struggling, families can reach out to their school for help. If a student is harassed or harmed by someone's words or actions based on race, religion, ethnicity, nationality, or other characteristics, they are encouraged to report it to a trusted adult at school or use the bias incident reporting forms and tools on the district website. Schools will follow up on any bias incidents that are reported. Thank you, everyone who's working to support every child and every staff member and family in our district and community. I will now hand it over to Superintendent Valderraz to get us started on our first topic, the district's budget. Dr. Valderraz?
So, thank you for those words, Dr. Perez. And I want to thank the board for being here this evening as we begin our budgeting process in terms of tonight with an explanation. And just an overview of our, I think Mike calls it the budget basics and the staffing allocation model as we call SAM. And when I first got here, I was looking for SAM, but there was no SAM. Who's SAM? We have a lot of acronyms in education, a lot of acronyms in education. So, our staffing allocation methodology, which is really our look at trying to have some equity funding, equity staffing, it's an equity staffing model that was brought here and something that we're going to continue to look at, see if we can revamp it. But it's a good model that provides some additional focus to our schools with our, especially schools most in need. So, I'll turn it over to Mike and Jessica for this presentation. So, thank you, and thank you for the work. Sunita?
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time tonight. Great to see you all this evening. We're going to walk through an agenda tonight of, we're going to talk about both the funding sources and uses in the district, budget process and timeline to kind of center you in terms of what, where we are now and what to expect in the future. We're going to go over some numbers so you can orient yourself as to where we are. And we'll, again, as Dr. Valderraz mentioned, we'll go over the staffing allocation methodology. And as you look at this presentation and agenda, our goal is, under the funding sources and uses, we want you to have a general understanding of where the $1.5 billion budget comes from, right? Like, what are the things that make that up? We do not expect you to be experts on all phases of the budget at the end of this presentation or the end of this year or at the end of your term, right? There's just too much. But what we do want you to have is a pathway and some resources to look at. So, you've got both a hard copy, you've got this electronically available if you ever want to reference it, to kind of give you a pathway. So, on the funding and sources and uses, we'll go over that. On budget process and timeline, again, just to orient you to the steps we go through when we go out and ask for some community input, what's going on behind the scenes with our internal administration and staff talking about the staffing allocation methodology, kind of the steps we go through over the next several months to build the budget. We'll go over the numbers, not to say they're right, but to say, kind of ballpark-ish, where are we right now? What does the next three years look like under a certain set of assumptions? So, again, just a kind of a general roadmap of where we, how we look financially at this time. And again, some details around the staffing allocation methodology to give you some orientation of how we staff our schools. So, with that, we'll start with funding sources and uses. And these will be fairly similar, but this is what makes up our $1.5 billion budget. You look at the two big sections. It's the district's general fund and the district's capital projects fund. And then it gets filled in with our debt service, local option levy, grants, SIA, ESER, and so on. So, if you add all those slices up, that totals the $1.5 billion budget that was adopted last June. This next slide is very similar in terms of what you just saw, but it kind of lists out for you, gives it more of a list format as opposed to looking at it in a chart format. So, you'll see listed first is the general fund, and that's our operating fund. And again, we acknowledge that's where a lot of the SAM comes from. The general fund pays for a lot of that. Down below that, you'll see all these other funding sources. And you'll see that red R for restricted because we have lots of restrictions placed on various funding sources on what we can spend those dollars towards. This is much different than when I began my career in K-12. We are a lot more prescriptive. The good news of the SIA is we got it, there's more funding for kids. The other side of that is there's much more strings attached. If you, the integrated guidance you approved last year, and you look at what's coming up with integrated guidance, the early learning grant, all those things, we've got some additional hoops to jump through. It's not just the board saying, okay, we've got some resource, what do we want to do with it? So, we have to thread the needle a little more than we used to. On the next slide, we'll break these down. We'll talk about the general fund sources and uses. The major funding source for us in the general fund is the state school fund. You'll hear us talk about that often. We always have our eye on what's going on in the state school fund. Again, we're funded at $10.2 billion this year. And that, and local property taxes, which are also a part of the state school fund, account for 88.5% of our revenue. So, that's a big number. That's the primary source of funding for our general fund. Outside of the general fund, Beaverton is fortunate enough to have a local option levy that we use to fund teachers. That's another seven and a half percent. And then what you have remaining is some other revenue, interest earnings, some money that's passed through to us from the ESD, but certainly much smaller pieces of funding compared to, again, the state school fund and that local option levy. So, that's how we receive those funds. How do we use them? It's the operating fund for the district. We spend 88.3% of those funds on salary and benefits. 1.3% of that goes out to charter schools. We spend a couple percent on utilities. We have transfers out to other funds for like our workers' comp and insurance reserve funds. And then everything else is the other 7.1% of the budget. So, when you think about everything else, it means literally everything else. So, outside of those categories, think about things like what you see in an elementary school. Copies, toner, copier charges, curriculum, supplies and materials, everything else we spend money on is within that 7.1%. So, when folks talk about, well, just cut your discretionary spending, we don't have a ton of discretionary spending. We're heavily invested in staff and salary and benefits. And once we pay to keep the lights on, pay the charter schools and transfer some money out to pay some other bills, there's not a lot left. Go ahead, Director Carpenter.
Yeah, new to this and misunderstood these. I think you've clarified it for me. So, charter schools, so for every one of, every BSD student that goes to one of our charter schools, that money goes out the door to our charter schools? Does this include BSD students who go to charter schools outside of BSD?
So, if one of our students attends a charter outside of BSD, those weights go directly to that charter as opposed to being passed through. The charter schools, what I'm referencing on this slide, are the charters that are sponsored by our district.
Okay. So, if we have students going to charter schools outside of BSD, it's not really, it falls under other, okay.
We don't receive the revenue to begin with, and we don't send the money out.
Oh, you just don't even receive, it just goes straight from the state. Sorry, I misunderstood it. Thank you.
Sorry. And please feel free, we can interact as you like, and we'll try to make this conversational so I don't bore you to tears.
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't explain that to people. It is a work session, so we can talk when you have questions, if that's okay with you?
Yep, absolutely. And we'll stop at each section, too, and just say, all right, need a breath, and where are we at?
And then also, I'll try to look around more. I was like concentrating on what you were saying and not looking around. So, if somebody wanted to talk, then let me know. I didn't even look.
Great.
But I will now.
Thank you.
So, Mike, just real quick, and also the 88.3, last year, we're in 89.2% people. The average in Oregon's under 85%. So, we're really people-heavy here in this district, and we're thankful that we have an operating levy that our voters passed to be able to help offset that. But we're on a very much a high side in terms of staffing.
Correct. And it's been our intent to bring that number down because, again, that brings in a little more flexibility and sustainability to the system, right? We're trying to avoid a situation where we're hiring and then turning around and reducing, and hiring and reducing. We're trying to keep that on a level playing field, and it's a little easier when that percentage is a little lower.
There was actually something, I wasn't quite sure how we were going to do the conversation, but if you go back to the all-funding budget of the $1 million with a graph, that one, something that I think is really, when I first saw this, that is impactful is that a lot of the way, a lot of this, we have this money, but it's all restricted. It's very specific to what we can spend on. So, you can see in the red on the table, and then it'll tell you like PERS Reserve, you know, long-term planning fund. So, that's to safeguard our teachers and their retirement and our staff's retirement. So, it's just something that's important to note, that the money is restricted. And I know you said that, but I just wanted to make that.
Thank you, Chair Perez. I appreciate that. And that's, again, we don't expect you to know and memorize all this, but if you're ever wondering like, well, what happens with SIA? Well, there's a lot of accountability in that integrated guidance that says, here's where we're at, here's how we're spending the money, and here's how we're going to be accountable to those dollars down the road. So, as you mentioned, pretty restrictive compared to the old days where you kind of got the money and the local board got to say, how should we spend that?
And I guess one more piece is that, you know, we've been, when we think about statewide and school funding, here, we have a certain pocket or a pool of money that's being used statewide to fund our schools. And if we think about like our early learning initiative that's coming up, and it's a new grant that we'll be learning more about soon, that money, it's like, it's coming, some of those funding sources are coming from the same pool of money. So, it's not that we're necessarily having like more and more money coming to education at the state level. Some of that money is being moved around in a few more, as you can see, there's a lot of restrictions on to how that money can be used within the districts. And I think that's important as we think about SAM or we think about our funding, student allocation.
Staffing allocation methodology, yes.
And other ways that we look at, how can we decrease our expenditures?
Next slide. Again, this is graphically, what's going on with where we are, salary and benefits, and what those totals are. And you'll see in the box off to the right, 8.3% of the total salaries and benefits are the local option levy. As Dr. Valderraz mentioned, that local option levy funds teachers, and that's included in those totals as well.
One of the things that also to note is that we're proud at BSD to have, I think we have the highest-paid teachers in the state. Is that correct still?
We're close. It moves from year to year, but we're in the ballpark. We were a couple of years ago. I'm not sure, Gus, are we still or are we right near there?
It kind of depends on the level, I think.
Yeah, if you look at the starting salary, I don't think we are the highest. If you look at the top-end salary, I think we are.
They're $100, yeah.
Next slide. Grant funds. So, this is a pretty big piece of the pie. Our major funding sources here are state and federal grants. That's most of what we see in terms of grant funding. And in a couple of weeks, when we come to you at the business board meeting, we'll talk about grant fund report that we'll bring you, so you'll get another look at that. They're all restricted, and they've got rules and narratives that we need to follow. Thinking about the student investment account, we talked a little bit about that. ESER, it's got boundaries around it, too, in terms of capital requirements. Our biggest boundary on ESER, though, is that it's ending, right? Like, it's actually expiring and not coming back. So, $22.9 million budgeted this year. You'll see as we go through the slides tonight, we're working our way to try to make that number smaller and smaller in terms of what we have to deal with as we budget for next year. High school success, we budgeted $11.8 million. Other federal grants, $47.5 million. We include capacity for unknown grant awards. So, what we'll build into the budget, Sunita, I think this gets to your question you had the other night at Audit Committee. We build budgets, and budgets are our plans, generally speaking, but we'll also budget for some unknowns. And so, a piece of this is for some unknowns that might occur. Of course, we will not spend it if we don't get it. That's not allowed. So, but we do build that capacity in so that we don't have to reconvene a budget committee in the middle of a school year to deal with a grant that we'd really like to have and Okay. Where's that student investment account break out in terms of, on a pie chart basis? The biggest piece of it is our equity-based classroom teacher allocation. We knew prior to the SIA coming in and as we were building the staffing allocation methodology, we kind of had an idea of where the community was, what those investments might look like. And so, we're able to weave in about 40% of that is our equity-based classroom teacher allocation. And that's primarily, we have it not only throughout our system and classrooms, but we also have another even targeted investment at K-2, where we want our class sizes to be the lowest. So, and it's an interesting process that Jessica gets to go through as she builds this into our district. She'll make an allocation out of the general fund to all the schools based on our rationale and a formula, and then she gets to go do it again based on the local option levy, and she applies it again across the levy. And then she goes it one more time where she goes through this equity-based investment here out of the SIA. So, she runs it again, and then she runs it one more time for K-2. So, she goes through four or five different steps here to get to what class sizes and school allocations look like for teachers. But that's the biggest investment we have there. You see academic coaches, social workers in there, student success coaches, nurses, and special education teachers, psychologists, and so forth. So, that's the bulk of our SIA.
I think, Sunita?
And maybe I'm jumping ahead, you can correct me. I know that SIA came at 36.9 from your numbers, and it's a restricted fund. ESER is going away. Some of the things that ESER is paying is like social workers and coaches. So, would you be able to cover that with that extra money?
You're stealing my thunder. That was my big surprise moment of the evening. But we'll cover.
Just don't drop the mic right now.
Yeah. We'll cover that.
All right, okay. I'll wait for it.
Just so you know, it doesn't cover all of it, but it does cover some of it. We move some costs out of ESER and into the SIA because it's allowed and fit the criteria, and it does lighten the load a little bit on what's left in ESER and what we need to still account for. So, good question, we'll get to it.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide is high school success. Again, we budget $11.8 million. It's restricted. We follow our integrated guidance plan for that. These are really, these are down to the activity basis, right? Like, if Dr. Josh Fritz were here, he would tell you, he's got a smart sheet that's loaded and goes down into really, really specific detail of actual activities that they're doing at schools and what those are, what those represent, and how they fit the criteria, and what outcomes we hope to see at the end of those. So, a lot of detail around that. You can kind of get the general themes when you look at it, that we're funding grad mentors, credit recovery teachers. So, the idea here is getting kids to graduate. That's certainly a mission of the high school success grant. CTE, you see, that's a big number in there. That was a part of high school success, that we have additional CTE opportunities available for folks and the rest of those in there. But that's high school success in terms of how we budgeted it. ESER, we talked a little bit about that. This is the remaining $22.9 million of, I think overall, including all sources of ESER funding received, we got about $72 million over the life of ESER. This 22.9 is what we budgeted this year. You can see where we funded that budget. We had school support specialists, middle school academic coaches. We've got some facility staffing, again, due to the pandemic and some of the extra work we've done around keeping air movement and flowing. Again, middle school classroom teachers, we made an extra investment there. And I won't read the whole list, but that kind of gives you a flavor of what's currently in ESER. On the next slide is our other grant funds budget. Title grants, you see, are 13.4%. IDEA, these are, those are two of the big ones you'll look at in terms of what we receive from the federal government.
I actually have a question on the one before for ESER.
Sure, please.
You had mentioned that like social workers had been moved. There's still 10% of social workers being paid out of ESER? Is that correct?
So, well, I'll get, I'll show you the exact numbers.
Later.
A little later in the slides. We've got about 55 staff still left in ESER. There's still some social workers in there. We moved some others that fit more easily into the SIA as we got our revised allocation. So, we'll cover that in just a bit.
Okay. And bilingual resource facilitators, is that like TOSSAs or are they in buildings?
I believe those resource facilitators are in buildings, yes.
Okay, thanks. Oh, sorry, Ugana.
Hi, Mike. So, my question is on the SR funds. So, we have 22.9 million, and they're going away in September of 2024. So, if we don't spend that money, and I know that this is also a restricted fund, what happens to it?
We would, we would not get the money, right? So, if we didn't spend it, we wouldn't get it. So, but we will spend it. I can assure you that by September of '24, we will have the money spent. So, we'll have a plan, another plan, and one more plan, just to be sure, to make sure we spend those dollars. But you're correct, we would not claim any dollars that we did not spend at the end.
Okay, thank you.
And this does allow, on that slide, it does allow for not only this year of summer school, but next year's summer school as well. So, we built that into the plan that we get another year of summer school. Sure.
So, that's great. Are we advocating at the state level, though, to get funds for summer school? Because, I mean, that's not in our general budget. So, is that just something that we're taking to the state, saying hello? Same with social workers, by the way?
We'll continue, yeah, we'll continue to advocate. This coming year is the short session for them, so we probably won't get much out of that. But we'll continue to, that our voices be heard in terms of summer school. And we did get some good support for summer school initially, coming right out of the pandemic from the state level. But it's important and something that we need to do. In fact, I think as a part of the early learning, there's some summer school stuff that we need to be doing as well. So, we'll keep an eye on that. Again, so I think we went over this title grants, big piece of that. Again, we don't expect you to know, you know, what we're doing with Title III exactly on parent involvement or Title II or in some of those areas, but those are those big pieces. And again, those have some specifics at the federal level on how they expect us to spend those dollars. Debt service fund, we've got a few different types in here. It's restricted. It is funded by our local property taxes and some transfers. It has to be used to pay debt service payments in principal and interest. We've got our general obligation bonds, which are similar, that's the capital bond that was approved a year going May. We've got full faith and credit obligations. Those are some debt that the district has taken on over the years, just independently without going for voter approval. So, our general fund's on the hook for that in terms of paying for that. And then we've got PERS bonds. For those of you that aren't familiar, those are pension bonds where we've issued debt to pay off our long-term liabilities on our PERS pension. We did it in the initial round back in the early 2000s. Those will be paid off in about 2027-ish. And then we've got another round that we issued, I think in 2016. So, we've got those going on for a while. A big piece of them will be ending in 2027, but there's more to come on that. So, what we do is we go issue debt at a, hopefully a nice low interest rate, and we pay, we pay that to PERS, and they have those dollars, and then we pay that debt over time at a lower interest rate than potentially what PERS would be charging us to pay that, if that makes sense.
Okay, go ahead. Tammy?
So, I, this isn't clear in my mind. So, we can go out to the voters and ask for bonds, like our bond levy for building buildings. We could also go borrow money to build a building or major renovations. But it seems like, since our money from the state is becoming more and more prescriptive, that seems like a bigger gamble? Okay, so it's not something we do much anymore?
No, you're spot on. The idea of going out for general obligation bonds gives you not only the ability to issue bonds and build facilities and do those kinds of things, it gives you the taxing authority to pay for that debt. When we do something individually, where we say we're going to do some renovation somewhere, we don't have the funds to do it, and we don't want to go ask the voters, then our district's general operating budget's on the hook for that. So, yeah, we don't do much of that.
Yeah, I actually have a question about that, too. Like, I guess I'd be interested in seeing what's left in that, like, what expenditures we've taken on to see what's left in that, for those bonds?
The most recent is.
Does our budget committee see that? Does our, who sees that?
You'll see it in the act for that's coming to you in December, in our financial statements. It'll show our, what debt obligations we have. But if you're interested, I'm happy to break that out for you and show you kind of where we are. It was a couple of various issues back in the day. There's also one on this building that's out there as well, where we haven't asked for voter-approved levies for that. We'll just pay that off. And a big piece of that will be paid off by the sale of property that's coming, if that makes sense.
One of the things we talked about before was like, in the past, small expenditures that added up to a larger amount were used. I know we have, if it's over 150,000, then we would need to approve it as a board, but smaller ones, we don't. And kind of the learning from the conference building for me was around knowing the total amount now of how much the estimated cost is for certain things. And then even if it's in small pieces, knowing the total amount. And I appreciate that change now that we'll be hearing about that in our general meetings and stuff as those kinds of expenses come up as well, is my understanding.
Absolutely. And by the way, we can't go out and issue debt without your approval anyway. So, we'd come to you and say, hey, we've got this problem. I've done it in other districts where we had a turf field fail, and we weren't going to have, we were going to have to close the field. So, in the interim, the board gave us the authorization to go issue debt. We then passed a voter-approved bond that authorizes to pay off that debt. And so, that's a way of getting it done. But we'd come to you for authorization for anything like that.
Susan?
Just clarifying, because I'm a little confused by the question just asked by Karen. So, when we go out for a bond, we're going off, going out for like, you know, let's say $450 million. And then when you come to us with a contract, that might be part of the bond, but it's over a certain amount of money. Typically, it's over $250,000, but sometimes it's, depending on the contract, it's.
150 for us currently. I think it's headed to 250. The law changed. Legislators raised those limits. They're working through the administrative rule process right now, so you'll probably see that from us. But you're correct, there's, one is the authorization to place a bond on the ballot and get that approved. And then the other is all of your requirements as a board, where you've said, here's when I want to hear from you about these various issues. And through policy, we come back and talk to you. If that makes sense. Okay, next slide. I think it just showed, yeah, it shows kind of where we're at. The big piece of it are those general obligation bonds, that's the biggest piece. Pension bonds is next, and you'll see those full faith and credit obligation bonds is this much smaller piece of the total. And declining even still, right? Remember the way we set our debt service up on this building? We'll pay a bunch of it off this year. So, that number will shrink even more next year. Next. Capital projects fund, just had a little chat about that, but major funding. But major funding source, again, bond sales, 99%. The rest is going to be some interest earnings. We'll get some grants wherever we can. You know, we're always looking for seismic grants from the state. We're looking for any dollars that we can match out there. But by and large, the biggest source of that is through the sale of bonds. Must be used within the scope of the capital bond measures. So that ballot title and the language around it kind of guides our work as we try to move forward in building capacity in our capital construction, as well as keeping the bond promise and making sure we're following through on that. There's a small portion of non-voter-approved, that's the construction excise tax that this board implemented many moons ago and authorized. So when new residential or commercial is built within our district boundaries, we collect a small portion of tax on that. It's limited, it's limited by statute, and it's dictated by statute. And it's indexed for some kind of inflationary number on an annual basis. And the Department of Administrative Services sends that number out to us every year. Where do we spend those dollars? Again, salaries and benefits. Purchased services is a larger number. Think about architects and engineers and those kinds of folks. Supplies and materials, not a big number. Capital outlays, the biggest. So we're building things and, and constructing things with this capital projects fund. That's how it looks. Again, biggest piece of that pie is building and construction. Insurance reserve and workers' comp, we have, so we have two funds. Major funding sources is a transfer from the general fund and also payroll taxes. So we tax ourself to fund a portion of this through, through our payroll taxes. It's restricted. We use it for self-insurance programs and workers' compensation. Salaries and benefits is about 11%. That's our internal staff that are managing the workers' comp and insurance reserve program for losses and, and dealing with claims. Insurance judgments and settlements are the biggest piece of where we end up with spending those dollars. And then the everything else, that's 16.7%. That's what it looks like from a pie chart perspective. Nutrition services is our next major fund. Major funding source is the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. So when you look at the food we serve and what we do, you know that we're meeting whatever those USDA guidelines are, because those are the dollars we're receiving. So we're reimbursed based on the meals we serve. And because of that, we follow what those federal guidelines are in terms of how we administer the school lunch program and breakfast and snack and everything else. Again, restricted must be used for child nutrition programs. As you would expect, salaries and benefits and food is where we spend the money, essentially there. And of note here, this, our food service program operates without subsidy. And by that, we mean we don't take general fund dollars and send it out to the food service fund to subsidize it. It stands on its own and operates independently.
Tammy?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm not sure I understand. Major funding source is the, from the federal government, National School Lunch Breakfast Program? And what students and families pay?
Right.
What's the breakdown of that?
What do you think it is, Jessica? Is it 70/30? Probably reimbursement? Because even with our paid lunches, we get reimbursed on that. We get some level of reimbursement on a school meal.
Okay.
I can get that for you. I, I shouldn't speculate. Our actual sales is not a, yeah, it's not a big revenue generator. Okay, excellent. She'll, she'll know way better.
We did get to hear from her in the bus tour. And I remember that we were all dreaming about being able to provide, I won't speak for the whole board, speak for myself, free food for all of our kids. But then there are some federal pieces that are changing, and she talked a little bit about that, I'm sure. She'll probably touch on that when she comes back.
Yeah, this, the, both at the national and at the state level, getting kids fed has been a priority. And during the pandemic, again, I won't, I won't speak for Dr. Mead, but I know he enjoyed the fact that we were able to feed all kids regardless, and we didn't put money in the way, which was a great thing during, during the pandemic. It was fantastic. And I know there's been a push, even, even in the state of Oregon has been subsidizing and making more and more, paying for more and more reduced-priced lunches, picking up a piece of that in hopes of feeding more kids. So very important.
Tammy?
Right. What the cost would be for us to provide free lunch across the board? I mean, my guess is that administrative costs would be on top of the RCE, but I'd love to see that.
Yeah.
What the status is of us, you know, a question of students and families, okay? But also, what if the cost is-
No, I, I think charity's presenting next week. I think when I was in another district here in Oregon, in Eugene, we, we fed all elementary kids free breakfast and, and lunch, and we were heading toward free lunch for all kids. And it was a cost out of the general, but it was a decision from the board to make those, a conscious decision to feed kids. So, but I think charity, so he's taking notes. So we will be ready for our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Again, that's outlooks between salaries and benefits of, of folks getting those meals ready and the food supplies themselves. That's the overwhelming majority of the budget. And again, subject to all those federal and state guidelines, nutrition analysis, nutrient analysis, all the fun stuff charity can explain. Okay, we've reached the all other funds slide here, so we're getting near the end of kind of the sources and uses. Appreciate your patience. But student body and special purpose funds, biggest piece of this is student body funds. So as you can imagine, our students go out and raise money in all kinds of ways and, and want to spend those dollars. And we're real careful to not mingle those with anything else. Those are the students' dollars. They do get to determine how those dollars are spent within laws and reasoning and policy and those kinds of things. But we want to make sure we keep track of those separately from everything else. And so you can see those there. Categorical fund, think about things like state facilities grant. When we get those, equipment replacement, that state facilities grant has gone down, down, down. We won't, we won't, gone are the days where we used to get a pretty significant amount of money from that. It's been pretty well phased out, and the state has instead chosen to invest those dollars in those grants upfront. So, for example, our district got the $8 million awesome grant, which was a match to say, if our voters would support a bond in our community, the state would match us with $8 million. So that's $8 million, the way I put it is, that's $8 million coming from everywhere else in the state, supporting building schools in Beaverton, which is a great thing for us. So they've kind of gone away from the idea of allocating those out to districts as a state facilities grant and more in terms of an incentive grant. Scholarship funds, not a lot of money there in terms of, in comparison to our overall budget, but we do manage some scholarships. We have some families and, and folks that, that have given us some money and said, here's how we'd like these dollars to go out in scholarships. And so we manage those. Again, not a big piece of our budget, but something we segregate and deal with separately.
Tammy?
Is that the Beaverton Education Foundation? It's separate?
That foundation is separate on its own.
We're not going to talk about the BEF at all. That's completely separate.
We don't manage those, we welcome them, but we don't manage those dollars at all.
Thank you.
This is more of a, say, a family wanted to set something up, and they bring some dollars and set some criteria. And some might be, you know, give $1,000 a year to one student until it runs out. Or some might say, give $2,000 a year, and we'll keep feeding that fund every year. It varies. But we get the word out, out to our counseling departments, and that's something that happens actually outside, out of my office. Marcy kind of coordinates, coordinates that and gets the information out so kids can apply and, and they choose them at the school level, but we write the checks here from the business office. And finally, it's the long-term planning fund. That's the fund that you have set aside, where you say you want a financial reserve for this, for the school district of 5%. It's not there yet. That's not 5%, but we're working towards it. And each year that we don't make it through the budget process, included in policy, I have to come tell you what we're doing about it. Are we getting better? Are we getting closer? And give you a plan to get to that 5% level. So I think it was back in the 18, 19 year, 19, 20 year, a, a big portion of that was used to get through that school year. And since then, the board has been saying, we gotta, we gotta replenish that fund. And we've been doing it over time through the establishing of PERS reserve.
It's just one of those pieces that, that long-term planning fund has saved us many times and allow us to be a little, gives us a little bit of flexibility in the sense of being able to support students at a time when the money's down or, you know, hardships occur that we need, we need to add. So I think, I remember coming onto the board and the previous board was like, we have this on purpose, don't touch it, like, this is for emergencies. And several of the board members explained that to me when I came on. And I haven't done that to everybody, but Susan?
So I have a question, because I, you know, read the Oregonian, because it's a very exciting newspaper. But I've been reading that we might be heading towards another issue with PERS, even though the state legislature did some things that might create, I don't want to say crisis, but some concern earlier than expected?
Rates are going up again. They'll go up in the 25, 27 biennium. They got advisory rates in September. This suggested, and, and the statewide number, not the Beaverton School District numbers, somewhere around 1.3, 1.4% increase in the 25, 27 biennium. We won't know until next fall what our rate is for Beaverton, because we have those pension bonds issued, so they actually tell us, here's what your rate's going to be, Beaverton. And we'll know that in the fall of next year, so we can budget for it accordingly in 25, 27.
The pension bonds are to somewhat help us protect, I remember it, like, I don't even remember how many years ago that was, but I remember it, but it protects us from hitting a cliff with PERS?
Yeah, well, the idea is you issue pension bonds at a low interest rate. So in 2016, whatever the rates were at that time, the decision was made, let's issue the bonds now, we'll hand the money to PERS. That wipes out our, you know, our unfunded liability, so we're kind of where we should be. And then PERS uses that money each year to, to help stabilize our rates as we go forward. And the idea is that if the PERS fund, they're also investing those dollars for us, is earning more than what we are paying for the bonds we issued, we're in good shape. It can go the other way, though, right? Like, you can have a particularly, what you would not want to do is issue bonds and in the first year have negative rates, cost that big dollar amount upfront, right? So, but the overall idea is that if you issue the bonds at a low interest rate, that over time, you'll make enough, you'll make better rates through the PERS fund and, and through the PERS investments, that'll, it'll actually be, put you in a better position than you had been without issuing the PERS bonds.
I think, Sunita?
Thank you for going through the funds and the uses of each and every fund. And if, if we can quickly go over, you know, our six key focus, where the money is coming for, like the MTSS Assessment and Intervention, Equity Professional Development, CTE, Dual Language Expansion, and Pre-K Expansion, which fund we are getting the money is allocated? And if you have a number for those?
I don't, but it'll be spread, those, those initiatives are spread throughout, right? So when you look at our general operating budget and through the SAM, you'll see where we, where we put the focus on, whatever it is, class size, social work, behavioral health and wellness teams. And what we've put ourselves into a position where, again, it's much different than it was before, is the braided funding. So you've got a piece that's coming out of high school success, you got a piece that's coming out of SIA, you've got other pieces that are coming out of the general fund. So they're kind of braided throughout. Sunita, if, if you wanted us to look at those initiatives and you said, well, the strategic plan says these, this is what we're working on, we'll try to do some aligning to that as we go through our budget this year, so you can see how that's working out.
That would be good.
So remember, when, when we built last year's budget, we were still in the throes of the strategic plan, and, but we were kind of looking at it, right? Like, saying, what are these investments and are we kind of lining up? As you look at that in the coming year, we'll be able to show you a little bit better how those align. But it will be, it will be multi-source funded, if that makes sense.
Maybe also look at what other sources we can tap into for these funds.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be good.
I have a comment, and then Melissa, I think? Okay. I remember, I think what I remember is when we get the big budget, at the back part of the budget, they have, you had different topic areas last year or in the last couple years. And so I think maybe that could be a nice place to help us understand, like, with these priority areas that were named for us and align it there, perhaps?
Yep.
Or a little explanation for the different ones to yours that-
And you should know also that we, we're working right now with some folks in teaching and learning to talk about what are the things we want to look at? What are the things we want to measure in the coming years? Knowing that we, it won't be a one-year analysis, it'll be a multi-year analysis, right? But we're, we're putting together what we should be measuring, how long we ought to be measuring, what are the appropriate outcomes to measure? In some cases, can we measure it and feel that we've measured it with fidelity? So those conversations are happening right now as we begin to build our budget.
And thinking about which of those pieces we're going to accomplish in year one, two, three, four, as we're moving through? Because not every piece is going to be every year in its kind of tiers.
Yep.
That'll be great to see. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I am going to turn it over to Jessica. She's going to talk about process and timeline.
Okay, so Mike just walked us through all of the sources and the uses. And so I'm going to give you a feel for how, what the process looks like in terms of the, throughout the course of the year. We start in the fall-
Do you mind pulling your microphone a little bit closer?
Yes, I sure can.
Thank you.
I'm generally loud, so I don't want to get too close. So we start in the fall, and the fall term here is used pretty loosely, because the budget team starts rolling models in August. So we basically take July of no budget talk, other than setting up the current year. And then when August hits, we start rolling our models and getting our, getting everything that we need ready to go. In September, when we start paying the majority of our staff, when the staff who start when students start, are in the payroll, we start looking at salaries and benefits and analyzing that, looking to see where we came in, where we're coming in on our salaries as compared to where we budgeted back in the spring, and start making any adjustments that are needed. And at the same time, as the students are coming in and we're starting up the buildings, we have a small SAM committee that meets starting in August and goes through the end of September with the charge of looking at each classroom, each school, looking to see where the large class size is, where the small class size is, and what we can do to help support those buildings as they're welcoming students back. And then we, actually, back on this one, after we get through September, the SAM committee changes its focus and starts looking at the model and the things that we've seen through the fall and through the spring as we were staffing for the upcoming year. And are there any places where our staffing model had, we had to make some adjustments to it? Or just any places that don't seem to be working? And talk about those. Those are generally minor adjustments, but if there's something larger that is more of a system-wide, we would convene a larger SAM group, which I think we have a couple, a slide on later in this.
One question I, or one piece I wanted to point out that was, it's kind of, it's interesting to me, is that we, the state, and help me explain it a little bit, the state counts our number of kids, like, in October, and then that's the funding we get for the following year? Is that correct? How does that work, again? That October count?
Actually, we estimate it the prior year. So we'll, we'll tell them in December, this is what we think our enrollment's going to be next year. And they'll start paying us based on that. They'll give us a couple of windows of opportunity to make changes to that during the year. Like, we'll have a mid-year adjustment that's coming pretty soon, where we can say, oop, timeout, we're not, we're not where we thought we'd be, and they'll adjust our payments over time. But, yeah, we, we make that prediction essentially a year ahead. So remember, we're always looking at the prior year, because it's getting closed out still, because they're not done with that. We're looking at the current year. How do we look? What does enrollment look like? And then we're looking at next year. What are we going to look like for next year? So on any given year, we've got three years that we're kind of balancing in the state school fund.
What kind of money, and it might be a weed, you can tell me it's weed, but I'm just trying to understand, like, how much money do we leave for that flexibility? I'm sure we leave some money for, so like, we get, you were describing the numbers, like, we'll hear from community and staff, like, hey, we have a class of blank in this particular grade level at this particular school. And we're like, and it's already, the year has started, is there funds to decrease class size in that class? Like-
Depending on the year, we occasionally create holdbacks, where we hold back some staffing before the start of the year, so we can allocate those as we need to during the year. That's been a, that's been a, that was a pretty low number.[1782.21] I can't remember what our holdback was this year. It was a small holdback. The prior two years, it was very large because we were, we were having such large decreases in enrollment that we were worried that if the kids do show up, we need to have some staff held back. So we built in larger holdbacks before, a little smaller this year. We didn't make a ton of adjustments this year. We made some, but, but nothing like we did the prior two years where we were moving a lot of staff around.
Okay, thank you. Ugana?
Sorry, I have a quick question on the staffing, the SAM committee. What is the makeup of that committee?
So the small SAM committee is made up of teaching and learning, human resources, and business office.
Okay, because if SAM is, is, was implemented to provide a more equitable funding across schools, I would expect that there may be somebody from the equity group that'll be on that committee?
The original makeup, so when the staffing allocation methodology was initially implemented and created in this district, we'll get into some of that background, but it was a broad group of folks. This small SAM committee is Jessica, myself, Dr. Cordy, some folks on her staff. And what we're looking at is what's going on with enrollment? Where do we have some of those hotspots? Where we have some high classes? Should we be moving staff? Should we be hiring staff? What should we be doing? Those are the kinds of decisions that small SAM groups are making.
So the SAM committee has an equity model. So there's an algorithm built in. So what you're asking for is there's, there's, there's an algorithm built in in terms of just the ratio. So we're really looking at, do we, which, which schools need the?
Yep.
Which schools, should we pull the trigger on this move or not based on an algorithm that's agreed upon by the Big SAM, the Big SAM group?
Yep.
That involves BEA, the associations.
And we'll get into that as we move through the presentation. You'll see a little bit, greater glimpse of that. We'll explain that in a little more detail when we get to the SAM section.
And every, every week, the SAM committee meets every week between August and the end of September. And every week, we rerun that model as well. So that when we are hearing from, hearing from schools that may have a large class size, that might be intentional through the model. And so we run it just to make sure that we're still making decisions that hold up the integrity of the model.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Sunita?
Since it's based on an algorithm, is it, is it tested in the audit? Is that something tested?
No, that's our own internal model. So it, it doesn't get audited. There's not a compliance issue with that, that they would test for. It's just how we allocate resources within our own system. So we built it, it's, it's this document in terms of 20-some pages of how, how we run that model. And so we build it, we run it, and, and as Jessica mentioned, we run it multiple times during the school year. Because we make an enrollment estimate back in March that we then use for the next year, and enrollments change, right? So as Jessica mentioned, we rerun that model when the school year starts to say, all right, are we still where we should be? Is somebody owed a teach, in terms of, should we be allocating another teacher to another school? Are they in an overstaffed condition when they're still asking for someone? So we keep taking things back to that model. And as Dr. Balderra's mentioned, there's some integrity in that model in terms of the way it's built and addressing equity needs. And like I said, we'll talk about that as we get to that section.
We do have a section, that's part two of this presentation, is the description of the SAM model.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to December, when, so in December, our demographer gives us our preliminary enrollment allocations. And so that's his first look at where we think we're going to go. That is when we start pushing these formulas and seeing what it actually, what it actually produces based on what we're, what he's projecting that we'll see the next year. You will all receive invitations, if you haven't already, to all of our committee meetings. There's a Budget 101 in March and two Budget Committee meetings in May. The estimate of membership and revenue, that is what Mike was just referencing, when we make our estimate for enrollment to the state in December of the year before. So almost nine months before the kids show up. And that informs our state school fund calculation. And the first estimate that we get there is at the end of February, early March. And if there are any adjustments to our SAM model that are considered a minor adjustment, that doesn't need to go to the Big SAM group, that is a larger group, those are all due to the business office in December. So we can start running those through the models and see what they're, what they're doing, how they're allocating. In January, this is when we actually start our budget season. Our season is more so in the spring, but I like to do it all year long. But January is when we really, really get busy. We start sending out budget worksheets to our schools for their non-salary dollars, and those are based on the rates that are in the SAM document and the preliminary enrollment projections that were provided in December. We also send out our workbooks to departments so that they can work on their budgets for the upcoming year as well. And the big thing that we do in January is that we provide a listening and learning video. And this is really our first look of where, what we're looking at for the next year's budget. And this is also a really important time because this is an opportunity for our students, staff, and community members to provide input on budget priorities, additional comments, and get an idea of where we are.
Tammy?
Thanks. That video sounds amazing. I'm just wondering how it's advertised? Are we reaching some of the more marginalized communities that often don't have input? What is the process for that?
We push it out every, every way we can. We'll, we'll send it to Shelley, we'll send it to our internal teams, we'll send it to our MLD group, we'll send it to everybody. We'll encourage them to host sessions with parents and families at every school, just to watch it there, to provide that opportunity. We make sure there's a chance for staff to be able to view it as well. And it's been fairly, in my experience, it's been pretty effective in terms of getting both the word out to folks as well as getting some responses about their priorities back from them. I don't remember what our response rate was, it was?
About 1,600.
Maybe 1,600 or so.
I remember 16 and 2,000.
Yeah, and, and you know, I've held in my career a number of meetings. In fact, when I got to Beaverton, we would do these same sessions, but we did them live, and we'd get five people at one, seven at another, and not a lot of feedback. So as a communications tool, it's been, Shelley kind of pushed us into this during the pandemic, and it's actually been fairly effective in terms of getting some good feedback. And we can sort that based on, you know, was it staff feedback? Was it student feedback? Was it community feedback? And we, we do the best we can to push it through all channels.
Susan?
I was just going to say, I think it's a better way of getting the information out there because I've sat in these information meetings where there's more staff there than individuals. So that would be my feedback.
So moving into February, February is really the crunch month in the business office. All of the worksheets are due from schools and departments. And so the budget team is going through those, making sure that everything in them makes sense, it balances, and trying to get those into the system and have those adjustments made. If there was any changes that needed to be done to the SAM model that required a larger group, we would be doing that in February. That's also an opportunity for more building level input into a system-wide change. And then if there are any requests or changes from departments or through teaching and learning for SAM, all of those requests are reviewed first by the budget team to make sure that they are all making sense, adding and doing all of that. And then I provide them to Mike, and they are reviewed by our associate superintendent, both deputy superintendents and the superintendent.
And if I could just add in here, so when you, so again, painting the picture here, you're going to get a budget document in May that, that is going to be the superintendent's proposed budget. And so from a process perspective, we've met with staff in terms of talking about any SAM potential modifications, whether they're small changes or whether we need to involve a larger group in changes to how we staff our schools. So those meetings have taken place. We've done it in our budget listing and learning video. We've collected feedback from that. And then what you have is, you have myself, Dr. Cordy, Dr. Mead, and Dr. Balderra's getting together to talk about, all right, how are, how are we going to put this budget together? What is our best shot at a budget and opportunities for kids in the coming year? And when you think about who you have there, you have 34 years for Dr. Balderra's, 34 years for me, I think. Just, I have 40 years for Dr. Mead, 30 years for Dr. Cordy. You've got well over 100 years of folks doing K-12 education, sitting in a room together, deciding how we're going to make the right choices for kids in the upcoming year. So when you see that budget in May, you know that a lot of work's gone into that. And we've built up to that point, and we've been working towards that for several months.
So in March, we'll come back. It's usually the first week of March, we'll do Budget 101. And this is with the full budget committee. It is not an official meeting, but it is an opportunity for us to kind of set the stage for what will be coming later in May. It will go over some of the same, same projections and things like that that we are going to go over in the next section of this presentation. They'll just be updated for what we know then versus what we know now. Our final enrollment is done about the second week of March, and that is the number that we use to staff, and it is the number that we use all the way up until students start coming into the buildings. All of the changes to our budget allocations are made in the business office so we can start getting that through our system. And at this point, we should have all of the decisions made by the end of, I'll say at the end of March, that represents our best thinking on how we can support our kids the next year. In April, we held meetings with our school leaders and department. We actually don't hold meetings with departments. We just give them their allocations. But with the, with the schools, because they need to see how their formulas come through on the, how their enrollment works. This is their first look at their final enrollment numbers. We have meetings in early April, and we give them their allocations. And we go through kind of a state of where the budget is. There's a human resources aspect of that for the staffing piece. And our teaching and learning leaders are there as well. And once we do that with them, in the business office, we turn that over to HR to do the staffing, and we turn into finalizing our budget, making sure that it is all in balance and that we can put together that document for you.
I have one question. I'm, I'm just starting to think about, like, in your dream world, what, if any, changes, tweaks would you do to this actual timeline? Because all of a sudden, I was like, in April is when, like in Oregon, we have the biggest HR fair for hiring teachers. So it'd be kind of amazing if this April piece happened in February so that they go into, like, we can hire the most amazing teachers right away and?
We talk about that. We actually have, we'll release a certain number every year that we'll, we'll do early hiring, where we just know we're going to go hire early because we want the best and brightest. And, and so we'll do that in advance of this even happening.
That's a change in practice. So we started doing it when I got here. We're going to have two phases of hiring. We're going to have early hiring with a certain percentage based on the previous few years of doing how many primary, intermediate, middle school and high school and projections out. So we're going to do a two-phase hiring process, one-off projections and one-off hard numbers based on forecasting that's done at the schools. So it, it's, it's a different model. I've used it before. It's pretty standard for the industry. Kind of going to your point, Dr. Perez, is trying to hire early so we can get, so we can move people off what I call the board, meaning people off that are looking for work. We want to hire the very best early. So not to be, we don't want to have August hires unless we need to have August hires.
So in my dream scenario, I would know my funding from the legislature in the prior January. They would come into session and they'd say, here you go, schools. There's, there's what you need to operate, and we, we could speed this up by months.
And I want to clarify that we have the best and brightest of our teachers, and we continue, want to continue to hire the best and brightest.
Yeah, the other piece that I find difficult with that is that we have, we're projecting our state school fund and we're tracking it, but we don't actually get to see that first estimate for the next year until, I think by statute, it's like the first Monday of March.
First Monday in March.
And so that's late. If we, when we move things up, we may be caught off with something. And that has happened in this district before. And then we have staffed a couple of times.
I think Melissa had something. Okay, Susan?
You'd think I would know by now. So this question is something I read about, you know, funding from the state, you know, the 2.2 billion number. And that, that allotted like, you know, kind of figured in a 2% pay rise for teachers is what I think I read. I don't know if that was accurate or not. And so I'm wondering if there's a way, I mean, I know I'm wishing here, but a way of going back to the state in the mid-cycle of the budget and saying, look, that's really not feasible, it's not working. And in order for us to be able to pay our teachers, we need a higher?
We can always advocate, but those mid-biennium sessions are difficult, right? Because most of the money for the two-year window have been appropriated. So the state's limited in terms of what they can do with resource at that point. What you're, I think what you're speaking to is what the state defined, the legislative fiscal office defined as the current service level for K-12. And that used a, a smaller percentage in terms of pay increases and the like. And it was based on, I think, around 9.4 billion. The state did better than that. We were funded at 10.2 billion. But again, those legislative fiscal numbers are, that, that, we've, we've struggled with those every biennium in terms of what the state thinks K-12 needs compared to what our numbers are actually showing. So constant, constant discussion.
Yeah, anybody else?
Yeah, I think that's always challenging. I mean, again, we want to have amazingly paid teachers, but if we're given 2% to give, like, that's not even living wage. I mean, living increase, wage increase.
Yeah, and you'll see that again on some slides when we get into the numbers. You'll see what's gone on historically from the state and, and kind of where that fits over a two-year period.
Okay, we're almost there because we're almost back to July. In May, the superintendent will propose the budget to the budget committee. So we will come together for our first meeting. And this meeting has an opportunity for public input. This is the meeting where we take our public testimony. And that is advertised out online and everywhere that Shelley puts it. There's an opportunity to do it written or to come and do live testimony. And then if there are any questions from the budget committee, we will address those either at the meeting, before the meeting, in between the meetings. Because ideally, when we come back to that second meeting, we're prepared to approve that budget. Just for some context of what's going on in our buildings, in June, we open our new budget before it is adopted for our schools so that they can start opening up their purchase requisitions and get things going for the summer. Our elementary, our elementary schools, they do not have their office assistants in the summer. So they, so we can help them get set up to go for the summer. So when they come back in August, they're ready to open their buildings and start supporting their teachers when they come back. Our budget hearing is held at the board meeting, and this is another opportunity for any public testimony. And the school board will adopt the budget, and legally, it must be adopted by June 30th.
Okay, how are we doing? Everybody good? Keep plowing through?
Yeah.
We have about 30 minutes.
All right.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Slightly esoteric, but at the OSBA conference last weekend, there was conversation about that open letter that the, some of the state legislators wrote about PPS and their oversight of, of the money that given to them by the state. And I heard a comment from a fellow school board member in another district that this, that what districts ask, are asked to give a number that allows us to provide the same service levels? I don't know what the word.
Current service level.
Current service level.
That's a typical.
Yes, so that's the, the term he used as well. And, and that that doesn't, wouldn't include things like cost of living and other things like this. So as we go and, you know, talk with our legislators, is that, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, who's right here. And, and not really to get into that, but when we go and talk to our legislators, are we trying to advocate to say, we need more than current service levels? Because currently, you know, here's our third grade reading levels, and here's, you know, all these other things that we need to improve. So if we want, if we just ask for current service levels, we're not going to make progress.
Yeah.
So is that? So is that, okay...
You're thinking of it correctly, right? Like, there's this current service level that says, "We're just going to take what we did this year, pick it up and move it into the new year," right? And then within that, you have all kinds of things that change and influence that, whether it's bargaining agreements, or healthcare costs, or reading scores and need to do more in certain areas. And then there's the whole QEM conversation on top of that of, "How do we get to the QEM model? What makes sense there?" So there's a lot of those conversations going on when you're advocating at the legislative level.
So part of the argument is, is the definition of current service level. And that's been something that the state's working on right now, because it's always been an argument, in terms of right now, for example, what the state said was current service level was a 2.5% raise. A 2.5% raise, I mean, that, so the cost of living is, I mean, so it's not even real. So for example, PPS, they're asking for 8.5% right now, the union is, and the state's saying 2.5. So it's, it's, they're, I mean, it's just not keeping up. So, you know, the current service level, wasn't it even keeping up with inflation?
Right.
So wasn't it even keeping up with inflation?
But again, the way the Legislative Fiscal Office builds that, to my understanding, is through some discussion around historically, what has it been? And modeling it based on some history that doesn't reflect the inflationary pressure we've seen recently, right? So it just doesn't get into the model, and it, it's ill-suited. Okay. Let's go to numbers. Enrollment. So you'll see here in the light green are projected and the dark green are actual from year to year. This is our enrollment as of 9:30, going back a few years, and you can see where we've, where we've been and where we've headed. Why is this important? This is how we're funded, right? So we're funded on the number of students that we have and the demographics of the students that we have. So this number's critical for us. You can see we were falling well below projection the last several years. This year, we're pretty close to spot on. Congratulations to Robert and our demographer and the folks in their shop for getting close to the number. Made our life pretty, a little less painful this year, so that was good. But you can see we've also shrunk by 3,000 students over the last four years, so pretty significant decline. Next slide. School funding history, this is exactly what we were just talking about, right? In terms of how we're funded and what we get. You look at those increases from, now, these are biennial increases, right? So take those increases and split them in half. So when you look at the most recent one, we got a 9.7% increase. So let's just say 10% increase, cut it in half, it's five. And to what Dr. Baldairis was mentioning, when you have an 8.5% ask and you compare it to a 5% per year increase, you're in trouble, right? Right from the start. So those are the numbers we look at. You can see the various increases from biennium to biennium and how it's affected us. But at least it's going up. It didn't go up much during the '21-'23 biennium. I believe that's primarily because the legislature said, "You folks have ESER money, and you'll get through it and you'll figure it out." However, this, it was me yelling at that point, saying, "Every time you mess with our operating fund by giving us like a 3% increase over two years, that's problematic. We're not keeping up. I guarantee it." Right? Like, we had bargaining agreements then of 4%, 3.5%. So we're not keeping up with inflation in that environment alone, let alone in the future years. So that's something we pay close attention to, is that biennial increase.
Susan?
Well, the other thing I want to point out, too, in terms of the funding that comes from the state is then they put certain mandates in there that aren't funded, but they expect us to do it, so it comes out of our operating funds. So that 10.2 billion becomes even less because they're expecting us to do more with less.
Yeah. We keep an eye on those unfunded mandates and extra reporting, and this whole integrated guidance thing was supposed to be done to make it easy for us, and my goodness, it is a monster to get filled out and get complete. So that's state school fund, kind of history and projection and where we've been. Next is kind of our own school district scorecard. Last spring, we went to the Budget Committee and said, "How are we doing? Here's where we expect numbers to be." And so if you look to your left in the top-left section, you'll see our resources, and we break it out. For those of you that are not new to this, this looks pretty familiar to you. We show our beginning fund balance, what we call state-controlled, and by that, we mean our local property taxes as well as the state school fund, and then our locally-controlled dollars, and that includes our local option levy. And you see where we thought we would be. We thought we'd be at about $643, $644 million, where we actually ended '22-'23 with $652.2 million. And so overall, we were about 1.3% better off than what we thought we would be when we gave you a spring projection. The primary piece that changed there was both in the state-controlled, we got a little more in, as you mentioned, Dr. Perez, that May adjustment, where we're, we have a year open, but they're always adjusting the state school fund, and every May, we get an adjustment for the prior year. So we're always watching out for that. That was a little better than we thought it would be. And in the locally-controlled section, we got more interest earnings than we were counting on at the time that we made the projection. If you look below that on the expenditure side, you see salary benefits and all other, and our spring projection and where we ended. On salaries, we were really close. On benefits, we were a little under. Jessica and I were talking about that just the other day. We're going to work on our model here. I think we end up with, in the spring months, we end with more subs in our buildings that don't carry the same burden rate of benefits. Not to get into too much detail, but we think we need to correct that a little bit, and so we'll be working towards fixing that. And then again, we spent a little less on supplies and materials, so overall, we spent about 1.17% less. What did that do in terms of where we ended the year? We ended the year at about $138 million, and that long-term planning reserve ended with $17 million. So overall, total reserves at $155 million. So again, this is kind of our scorecard of where we said we'd be last spring and where we actually ended up. It improved a little bit, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, and we'll try to do better next spring when we give another projection. This is the big one. This is something, again, through Budget Committee process, you'll see a lot of. We tend to break these things down. In terms of that 300-page budget document, this takes the general fund budget and puts it on one page for you. Again, the same kind of structure that you saw on the previous slide. We have our beginning fund balance, our state-controlled and our locally-controlled dollars to give you your total resources. On the expenditure side, we show salaries, benefits, everything else, and we total that amount, and it gives you an ending fund balance below that. And then we add into that the long-term planning reserve, and it gives you a total reserve at the bottom. We built this, one thing I always love to say about this, when I show you numbers and they're projected out to 2026, 27, is the one thing I know about this is it's wrong. It's, so we know it's wrong right now. Not everything's going to come in as exactly as we've said here for the next three years, but we owe you an estimate, right? So how do we build this estimate? Well, we base it on the $10.2 billion state school fund and our assumptions, and we assume that in the '25-'27 biennium, that the state school fund will grow 9%. Why do we pick 9%? Because 9% is a little more conservative, but it's similar to what we've gotten in the last several biennia. So if that number goes up, our financial condition improves. If that number's less than that, it gets worse. But that's what we used. We used all of our most recent enrollment projections to come up with those numbers. You can see we used an 8% increase in medical benefits over time, built into this forecast, and we've also built 4% salary increases over the next three years in these forecasts.
Tammy?
Just to clarify for me. So long-term planning reserve, we would like to be at 5% as a whole. Our ending fund balance is quite high.
Yes.
And I know these documents, as they should be, are public, as we are heading into our own bargaining. Are we thinking about, are you planning in your budget? Because I know, I think bargaining is, the contract's up at the end of the year, so I'm sure we're talking now.
Yes. We'll begin bargaining this winter-spring.
Are we thinking about BEA asking for a similar rate increase for pay? And are we, you know, what's our thinking there? And how much of an ending, what's our ideal ending fund balance? If we're trying to grow a long-term planning reserve to 5%, that, we have to number, we have 5%. Why such a large ending fund balance?
So what's happened is historically, over time, we've built our budget where we have had declining enrollment, and we've adjusted accordingly within our budget. What has caused our ending fund balance to grow the last couple of years has been primarily that while the, while our district has lost students statewide, the number's gone down even more. So the amount we get per student has actually gone up the last couple of years. So that's caused our fund balance to increase. During the pandemic, our fund balance certainly increased. We weren't spending nearly the dollars that we had before. What I would draw your attention to is, as you look through this, is if we go out to the 2023-2024 projected number there, you can see we're planning on spend, our total resources are $687 million, and our expenditures are $546 million, and we'll end with about $141 million this year. If you just look at those cost drivers going forward, that is the state school fund for next year, 10.2 billion, that salaries and benefit estimates of 4% for cost of living plus step added to that, and an 8% increase on benefits, you'll see we start to dig into that reserve, and that reserve drops about $12 million. If you go out and look at the next year after that, and we just keep doing what we're doing, you see that fund balance drops about $39 million. And then you go the year after that, and if you don't do anything, it drops 53 million more dollars. So what you end up with out there in '26-'27 is about where you need to be with your 5% and 5%, your 5% reserve in the general fund and your 5% reserve in the long-term planning fund. Between those two, you're close. But you, imagine that $53 million hole going into the next year. You'll spend all of it, right? So the long-term trajectory here, which would say to you, if you gave 4% increases and 8%, and these numbers worked, and you got a 9% increase in the state school fund, you'd still be in a troublesome trajectory moving forward. And that's the key takeaway here, right? This is, we're not in bargaining. We haven't started bargaining yet. We have a lot of, as I like to say, a lot of water to run under the bridge between now and then. But the long-term picture here would suggest to us that we got to be careful, because structurally, it doesn't look great.
No, totally get that. Yeah, you look at that last number you've got posted here. But anybody who's looking at this sees a projected $141 million in ending fund balance. So it just feels, I'm just interested how that goes, and I've had a couple of people ask me about why such large reserves, and I appreciate seeing this play out, and I think that's a good response. I just have been, heard a few questions about it, so I just wanted to better understand that.
Sure. And I get it all the time, and what you really have to be careful of is that fund balance is a one-time resource. When you spend it, it doesn't come back. So if you use a one-time resource to fund long-term liabilities, right? You end up in a position where you get more upside down than what we are here. So we'll be careful and we'll be watching that, and we'll give you good counsel along the way.
Susan?
So if we end up spending it early on, there's a potential of cutting teachers and having larger class sizes, is that how it would look?
Well, we hope not, right? If, in this case, we would, I would, I would recommend to the superintendent, if this exact scenario played out, we'd be making some reductions along the way, right? So how do we like to make reductions? We make them small and incremental over time, so that you don't end up with that $53 million cliff, right? That's where, back in the 2019 year, where we were cutting 20 million and used 35 million of their long-term planning reserve. We never want to be in that spot. We want to be in that spot of small, mid-course corrections along the way. Make a correction one year, see how you did the next, see how it looks over the next three years, so that you keep that, the water kind of flowing in small ripples, not big splashes.
So we cut 90 positions last year. So we cut 90, so again, steady, so we cut 90 positions even though we had the reserve. So it's this slow trickle-down effect to get us to where we need to be. And I think we look at cash at hand, cash at hand, cash is king. So how much money do we have that's cash in terms of expenditures for, how long can we do business?
Right.
So I always look at, you know, three months expenditures, which is pretty typical. And some districts do have policy regarding the percentage of reserve at the end, ending fund balance. And in California, it was 15% for unifieds, we're unified, so, and that's a much bigger state because of cash at hand. So again, I think it's up to the comfort level of the board in the community. We're really fortunate to have a levy that supports the three, almost 300 teachers. We're really fortunate here, so. But to your point, it is a high reserve when it gets above 20. And, but again, I think what you'll find statewide as this happens is unless there's a structural change in the way we get funded down in Salem, you're going to see less and less districts have healthy reserves, because there's something wrong with our current funding system in Salem.
Sunita?
So I appreciate this chart, that really helps, and the fact that the fund reserve is a usage of one time, and if you do it, the expenditure is forever. And I also appreciate the fact that we kept the cuts out of these classrooms last year. We know that the enrollment is going down. We know that there are some schools that have higher class teacher ratio, you know, like there are more students and less help. When, when it does happen, the SAM model is supposed to take care of it, right? So that it would be...
So it is equitable across our schools, right? So that we don't just pick a point in time and pick a particular pain point in a school. We try to keep the integrity to the model. That's why we rerun that model and say, "Where are we with our staffing? Are we doing it the way that makes sense?" Because we want to make sure that we keep an eye on that equity lens as we, as we fund and allocate staff to our schools.
Do you feel that any modifications to that model is needed?
We're always talking about modifications to that model.
Okay.
Small, little ones, others that may need a bigger discussion. So, and again, we'll get into that a little bit more tonight, but yeah. Yeah, we're always talking about, we want, we want the best model possible, right? That gives the best resources.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Susan, and we have about 15-plus minutes left, so, Susan?
So this is maybe getting into the weeds, and you can tell me if I am, and I apologize in advance. So there are times when we have expenses on the operation side that are not covered by the bond, and it could be a million-dollar, $2 million expense. So assuming that the reserves can help cover us for like, operation expenses, and the older our buildings are, the more potential that is to have not just people issues, but also...
The ability to respond quickly to any needs that come up. Yeah, sure. I mean, look at, you saw Dr. Baldairis' email last week about what we're doing on some staffing issues, right? We're able to respond to that. How are we able to respond? We have a reserve. If we had no reserve, we wouldn't be having the conversation about what we can do, because we'd be saying, "How do we possibly do what we can for kids?" Okay.
Keep going.
General, okay, so this is basically, for those of you that don't like numbers and want to see it visually, it's the same thing you just saw, showing the blue line as revenue and the red line as expenditures. You can see where we are in '23-'24. We're pretty much close to being right on target. And beginning next year, our expenditures begin to outstrip our revenues, and again, doing nothing else, that gap just widens. It's just like your home budget, right? If you're in the hole and you just keep digging, it's going to get bigger and bigger from year to year.
It's called a structural deficit in educational terms, so this is, we have a structural deficit.
All right. Next slide. Okay. Student account, investment account update. Sunita, this is your thunder-stealing moment that you took earlier. Our original estimated award is $30.3 million. That's what we built our budget based on. The updated award was $36.9 million. That's what we received. What did we do? We brought additional middle school teachers, academic coaches, and school sports specialists that were moved from ESER into SIA based on that increased award amount. So that, those were the increases we made. The table you see there is the staffing that goes, that's included in the SIA. Amazing, almost 250 staff in there. So quite a number. Next slide. High school success. Again, that award actually went down. It was $11.8 million. Our updated award was $11 million. We did not change staffing levels due to that. What we did was move some non-salary out and aren't able to spend some non-salary that we had, but we didn't, we didn't actually move staff because of it. We just lowered some of those non-salary expenditures. Next slide. ESER update. So here's where we are, right? So, here's where we are, right? Like this was a much bigger number, this was 90-some, I think, last March when we were sharing in Budget Committee, 97 or so staff. We're down to 55.5 staff in our ESAR in terms of staffing. We have more funds than that. Again, remember, we're covering things like summer school, we got some money for facilities and maintenance in there. But the number we're still working with currently is that 55.5 number in terms of staffing still in ESAR. So, our challenge is that, you see, we still have 25.8 social workers in there and some other staff as well. That's what we'll be working on this winter to try to bring you a budget recommendation in the spring.
I forgot what CIA means, Teaching and Learning CIA Administrator.
Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you.
Okay, questions or comments on this? Sure?
So, first of all, acronyms, we should always have like the acronyms someplace and I know that we always have it in our budget book, but you know, and that's not, you know, I didn't mean to. But the other thing I want to ask about is the social worker question because, you know, I see that ESAR is covering some, I know we still have some that's under, that's in SIA. But then my concern is, and I think the truth is, we're gonna end up looking as if we're gonna cut some of those social workers and I'm gonna say, I don't think we have enough social workers to really help and support the mental health issues we have in schools. So, the fact that we'd be cutting them is a concern of mine.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that I would say that there's any guarantees of what's coming out of this next budget next year. I believe there's some evaluation around behavioral health and wellness teams and how we provide those services, how we provide all delivery services for kids, how we deal with our strategic plan and the frameworks around that. So, we got a lot of things that we've got to look at this winter to put a budget together and bring, bring what we think is, will meet the needs of kids for you next spring.
I think we had three social workers in 2016, 2015 or so and then, and then we had, we had like three total in the whole district, now we have 55. So, to your point, it's a, you know, return on investment, you know, what do we need and are we hitting the right bullseye? So, as a superintendent, I'm looking at, do we, we have a lot of behavioral support over here, how do we decare the behavioral support here through reading intervention, math interventions to keep kids engaged in the classroom? So, are we missing the mark somewhere? I mean, that's just a question. So, I don't have an answer, but I think that's part of the evaluation in terms of where do we get the most support for our kids in terms of engagement in the classroom so they are actually, understand how to do math and how to read, how to write when they're in K3 before they have more concerns, we have more concerns or the students have more behavioral hiccups in the middle grades and middle school.
Okay, with that, we are on to the Staffing Allocation Methodology. I thought it would be, Dr. Cordy and I set the agenda and lead this group in both the small SAM and any, and we, if you recall, we got the Big SAM together last year to talk about top priorities. That was a good exercise to go through, so I asked Dr. Cordy to join us here. I don't know if you have any comments, Dr. Cordy, but we'll let you kick us off.
All right, thank you, good evening. So, when I joined BSD about a year and a half ago, I was quickly introduced to this notion of SAM. And Dr. Valderraz described his experience in his opening comments here in the work session, thinking, you know, who's this, who's this person that we haven't met yet? Quickly to learn that it's an acronym for Staffing Allocation Methodology and the importance of that model, that team, the formula, the algorithm that exists within that methodology became evident to me just right away. And one of the things that I have appreciated, one of the many that I've appreciated about our approach, having spent decades in other K-12 districts in Oregon in roles where I was directly involved in staffing and what those conversations sounded like and then what those results looked like, just quickly grew an appreciation for the thoughtfulness and the intention that we, that we use and in our approach to staffing in our district. You know, one of the, the question that you asked Director Ennaya about the equity team being a part of, of the SAM committee when Ms. Jones described to you the membership, one of the things that I was thinking about in that moment is that the, the equity lens, the district's equity lens is at the center of everything we do. It's on table tents in meetings, it's on, it's right near our group agreements on every agenda. We review that in the beginning of all of our conversations and the SAM work is no different than that. And what, what I'm really proud to say about our district is that, yes, while we have dedicated individuals who we are so thankful for, who are in our Office of Equity and Inclusion as a part of the larger Teaching and Learning Department, it's all of our responsibilities and it's all of our responsibility to ask those questions about whose voices aren't represented in this conversation at this moment and go through those questions and engage in that conversation. So, appreciated the thoughtful question about that and really wanted to reiterate that, that the SAM approach to staffing really epitomizes equity. I mean, that is what is at the core of the formulas, the weighted staffing, the considerations about how and the numbers of staff that are deployed and what those demographics look like in various schools and those formulas because of the great work of the team over years prior to now, we're really able to, to know that those considerations are front and center. As Jessica had noted a little bit earlier in the work session, the SAM group, again, made up of some business office representatives, teaching and learning and HR. We meet every week in August and September to look at where those, I think you've heard us say hotspots are as it relates to large class sizes as enrollment numbers are starting to settle down sort of for the school year, right? And we look, we look at where those, where the numbers are and when, we have discussions every week analyzing right down to the classroom level where we have anomalies and how we need to tend to that and then make adjustments. And so, we did that and we're very deliberate about that, again, this fall. And now we're in this point where we've, we've gotten past the start of the school year, made adjustments where we needed to, to tend to the anomalies, the class sizes that were, that were larger and weren't, weren't aligning with the methodology of the work within SAM. And now that group is meeting to tend to the list that we have, that we've been gathering over the course of the year to say, we need to revisit these topics to really take a closer look to see what adjustments need to be made within the methodology and within the formulas. And so, just, we've, we've met multiple times in October, having those conversations, it involves lots of homework and then more research and then we come back together and have those conversations, multiple meetings in November. Just today, we spent several hours with our SAM group doing, doing just that. And so, you know, I just wanted to share that as my perspective and, and really to express appreciation about the work that's been done by the, by the team in the previous years and that's what we're gonna talk a little bit about next.
Okay, I think we only have about six slides and I know we're running short, so...
Carrie informed me that we actually don't have a hard stop, we just have an executive session after. So, if, this is an important piece of our work, so I think we'll go for a little bit longer than 7:30, but...
Okay.
This is important work.
Great. So, the Staffing Allocation Methodology has been around in this district for a very long time. I know that it used to be called the Resource Allocation Methodology. In the archive files that I have in the business office, I can find it back to 2007, '08, but I'm sure Dr. Maed could tell me otherwise. But it has gone through many iterations and it is a resource allocation methodology for schools based on the students and the demographics of the students in the buildings. On the, what side is that, the left side? There's a link there to the '23-'24 SAM document, it is also inside your budget documents and if you want it on paper, we can get it on paper. It's about 21 pages long and has every, every allocation that we make to schools through this model. In 2019, we updated the methodology and we used the student investment account that was coming to us for the 2021 school year. It was estimated to be at $32 million to the district at the time, which is a lot of new money coming in. And so, we used the student investment account and all of the outreach that we did with our community while we were building our plan to kind of feed why we would look at changing this model. And one of the big drivers for this was that we looked at the focal groups from the student investment account and we have, we have students with additional needs in all of our buildings and they, they need additional resources allocated to them to support them the best that we can. And our model at the time said, if you were over this percentage in your school, you get an extra allocation, but if you're under that percentage, you get nothing. And what this model does is it recognizes that there is need in every single building. And if you look at a large school with a lower percentage, just by the numbers, those numbers of students can actually be higher than a smaller school with a very high percentage. So, kind of spreading that out across our schools in a better model than just if you made it, you made it and if you didn't, you didn't.
So, a good example would be like a Westview High School and I'm making the numbers up here, but if you have 2,000 students, but you only had a 20% poverty rate, under the old model, you wouldn't get any resource at all. But what we recognize in this model is 20% of 2,000 is 400, right? Like that's 400 students in poverty, they have poverty needs at that school. So, this methodology allocates resources to every school based on a level of poverty, not just a criteria or a percentage limit.
So, when we went through this process in the fall of 2019 and early winter of 2020, we had a very large team that included building leadership from all levels, teaching and learning leadership, special education, multilingual IT was involved, human resources and business office. So, it was a really large team and we worked all fall and we incorporated as much of the student investment account feedback that we were doing through our community outreach with that from all of our students, our staff, our community members. And we also reviewed staffing models from other districts across the country. Here in Oregon, there are not a lot that are about our size, so we went out and we found other districts that are similar to our size, we looked at their models, we tested some of those models, we may have taken little pieces of each model and made our own. And so, we, we did a lot of research on this. So, what we ended with was allocations based on weighted enrollment and this weighted enrollment is based off of, it was originally based off of the free and reduced lunch percentage in each school, then the pandemic came through and took care of that. So, we changed our methodology to the direct certification from ODE, or we get the information from ODE, it goes directly to nutrition services and they share it with us. And we also use that for Title I eligibility determinations. So, now, now we're all using the exact same information on the exact same day to make those determinations. And we can weight our students based on those percentages. What we have is a model that can easily be adjusted, we can add weights or not add weights. Right now, we only have classroom teachers, counselors, assistant principals that are secondary schools and all non-salary discretionary dollars for schools are based on weighted enrollment. Some allocations don't make as much sense to do on weighted enrollment such as the principal secretary in the front office. You have one of those usually and then some assistants, but it may or may not, using the weights is not generally needed there. It should most like, mostly be with our, our student-facing staff. So, here's where we talk about our small SAM versus our big SAM groups. As we mentioned a couple of times, our small SAM is a group, I think it's about eight people and we meet many times throughout the year. And an example of something that would be a small adjustment that we could, we could handle in that small SAM group would be a couple of years ago, as we were trying to work through standing up flex online and trying to figure out how to staff it as the enrollment went up and then the enrollment went down and then the enrollment went back up again. And so, the adjustments that we made to the model there is we were trying to figure out what that base should actually be and whatever a normal year might look like. That is something that we can handle in our small group, whereas our big SAM group includes our, some of our building leadership, all of the members that are on the small SAM, it includes union representation, so our BEA representation, OSCE, they are invited to join us. And then we expand a little bit with some other department leadership from teaching and learning. And something that we would bring to that group would be if we wanted to change that weighting. So, right now, our elementary schools are weighted at 1.25. If we wanted to change that number, up or down, we would probably bring that to a big SAM discussion because that's more of a system-wide change. So, we, here's the original plan. Our original plan was that we would implement this in 2021 with the student investment account. We would review it in '21-'22, make some minor adjustments, make sure it's doing what we intended for it to do and then do a deeper review in the '22-'23 school year, so after it had been in place for two years and we could really see what it was doing and making sure that we're doing what we wanted to do. And what actually happened, as you all know, we had a pandemic and then our initial year of this new SAM model, we started school in comprehensive distance learning. So, some of the impacts of it weren't really felt until we welcomed our students back into our buildings in the spring. And then in '21-'22, we were back in schools, but we still had distancing restrictions and other pandemic-related restrictions. So, now in '22-'23 and this school year, we are back in schools full-time with no pandemic restrictions. So, now we are kind of at a point where it's a better opportunity for us to really evaluate what's going on in the model. So, most of our general education resource allocations to schools are in SAM. So, right now, our special education and our multilingual allocations are, come out of those departments. And then as Mike mentioned earlier, we have a very complex calculation due to the layering of the funding. And so, we do allocate the general fund and then we allocate on top of it the levy and then we allocate on top of it again, SIA, high school success, ESAR, all of these different funding sources. The idea is that at the end of the day, the general fund is our core operations and so that's our base. And anything else that we have is in addition to, we are very lucky to have these things in addition to it. Some of our allocations need work. This is a continuous improvement model and I know that we have a couple of things that we've got our eye on right now, but every year, we are reviewing this model and seeing if there are any adjustments that need to be made. So, these last couple of slides are just examples of what SAM looks like for you. This is the first page of the elementary school model. And what it does is it starts talking about our K2 priorities and the ratio there for those K2 classrooms for the teachers. It talks about weighting and why we wait students for these allocations. And then on the first page, we have our building leadership allocations as well as that support staff in the front office and then we start with our classroom teachers. So, we look at this and, so if you look at the classroom teachers, it will say the number of students divided by 24.45 for K2 and that is a weighted number. So, it's, it's fairly difficult to back into that number, but it's based on our weighted enrollment and our enrollment comes from our facilities team, from our demographer each year and we run it through that calculation that has been referenced a couple of times.
So, just to be sure that makes sense, so when you look at those enrollment numbers, that's not the actual class size enrollment because we have these weighted students in the model, right? So, class sizes, you would expect to actually be lower than that because you're, you're using these additional weights as kind of, I... as kind of a phantom students in the system, right? Like, so what you're looking at by comparison is the ratio we use. What actually turns into class size, we'd expect to be lower.
Just, I got some questions. Is the, the education specification document, I guess, that's used for like facilities planning, does that impact the number? Like, is there a relationship between, like, expected class size? Or like, how we get to the, and I'm making sure I'm understanding. Like, so in this elementary example, if 24.45 was the goal, like, or to use to make determinations, is that, is there a relationship between that number and like the building we're talking about? Or is it just a generalization across?
I believe, Dr. Mead, when you build an edspec, it's for a little bit larger numbers to accommodate. You, you don't look at targeted class size of 24 to one and build schools based on that number. You build them larger than that with the idea that we would need X number of square feet per classroom? Okay, so.
He said we average 30 students per classroom in specs. Just translating.
So this is a middle school example. I chose the counselors on this one. There's a note here that it is based on weighted enrollment. It includes all of our students enrolled in special education specialized programs. And so we are including all of our students.
Yes. I was going to say something, sorry about the elementary one.
Sure.
In the last comment about like 24.45 students at K2. Like, our community has told us over time that it's really important that we keep, they want to keep class sizes down. And that's a really expensive, to just decrease by one. I mean, we, the levy was how much?
We have $40 million in the levy and it funds 289.2 teachers.
Right. So I just wanted to, like, we are, we aim at 24.45 and we're putting more funding into lower class sizes at K2 on purpose. And that's what we're aiming for. But I just wanted to kind of note how expensive that is. And we know that our community has come out for the levy and supported us in that way to try to keep those numbers down.
So and also the 24.45, as Mike mentioned, isn't the class size that we're aiming at. It is the ratio because what we are using to divide into that is a weighted number. So if we have a school that has 500 students and 25% direct certification, that's actually 531 students. So we would allocate resources based on 531 students, divide that into the 24.45. So we're allocating, based on 31 students, we don't ever expect to come into our building, which is actually, in that case, an extra teacher allocated to that building. So it would lower it. So then we would take our actual number of students, not weighted, just the actual number of students, if you divide that in, roughly, an average class size that way. So we would expect those to be lower. Middle school, it's very, very similar to elementary. I just wanted to give a couple of examples of each level. Here, we have counselors, we have social workers, our classified support. So what you'll notice here is our counselors are based on our weighted enrollment. Our social workers are one for each middle school building. And then our classified support is based on students, but it is not based on weighted students. So when this model was originally built, as Mike likes to remind me, we were $70 million over budget because it was a, it was a really lofty goal. And so when we had to back that down, the idea was that where, where are we most student-facing? In our classrooms, in our counselors, in positions like those? And so that's, so we had to back off some of them. And so some of the classified staff was backed off there.
Interesting comment about the levy and how many teachers that purchases. The cost of the teachers goes up. That means, it's just an epiphany I just had just now. We have less teachers in the classroom because we've, the costs have gone up. So what we tell our, we go out and we say we need to invest in more money for a levy. And we started out, I think it was like over 300 teachers. And now I think I heard 279 teachers, but.
It's 289.2.
Okay.
Our original, I just did some research into some SAM history, all the way back to 2009, Dan. And what I saw was that our original levy was for 150 teachers. It was $15 million back in 2014. And then in both of our, and then over time, as the, the tax revenue has grown. And so we have been bringing, been able to fund about 300 teachers. So the first renewal, we were right at 300. But you're right, as the costs go up, we're fitting as many as we can in. But we are still close, but we are not at 300.
And that'll continue to change depending on the money that, you know.
Yes.
On the levy collection as well as the expenditures.
And all the money that, what we told community was like, we are putting all of the levy money into teachers. We're not taking that money and putting it somewhere else. It's just that the percentage that's, we have to take what's coming in and then divide it by how can we add teachers? So just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. So we estimate what we think the collection will be the next year based on past collection rates. And then we use that and what we are estimating for salaries for the upcoming year to determine how many we can fit in there. And then the last one here is a high school example. I chose counselors again, just, it's got our weighted enrollment. And then we've got some additional allocations that are per school. Some of them have the temporary ESER red font on there. So that's indicating that at the high school level, I think that was changed, actually. I have to double check that now. But it has, half of it was in ESER. So just as, we've been putting that on our staffing model every year as we've been working through ESER. So it is, we have been trying since the beginning to remind people that it will end and it is coming up very soon. And so these are areas that we will be looking at through the next budget cycle.
I just thought of going back to the middle school one as our schedule changes for middle school. I don't, we haven't seen it yet. I'm assuming, I'm thinking that it's going to be modified somehow, right? When we see it in the next couple of board meetings. I'm taking, I mean, our middle school, the number of teachers in the SAM for middle school probably will be impacted by those changes, I'm thinking, or? It's already been, it's not going to impact SAM?
Yeah, I, I think that, well, the SAM formulas and the weighted approach is not going to be impacted by any potential changes to a middle school schedule. But staffing at the middle school, depending on the changes to the schedule, will change. But it's not changing because of the weighted differences. It would be changing because of potential changes to the schedule.
And then, I mean, also, we had put that temporary COVID staffing to really help at the middle schools. And just naming that that is going to, the money for that and the particular way that it's been funded is gone next year. The ESER money is gone.
Portions of it. Some of it we put back into SIA, remember that? 30 versus 36 million. We took some of that one time ESER and some of that was middle school and we moved it into that SIA. So we preserved some of it already and we're, we'll roll up our sleeves and see what we can get done as we prepare the budget for next year.
This document represents how it was adopted. So at the time of adoption, they were in ESER. But recently, we were able, everything that's on the right side of your screen right now, with the red, those were all moved in to the student investment account.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. We have Melissa, Tammy, and then Sunita.
For the high school example, that says that there's a college and career counselor, one per school, so it's six comprehensive schools. And then on slide 10, when we're talking about the high school success fund, we have 5.0 FTE college and career counselors. And I'm assuming our option schools have college and career counselors too, or portions. So is this an example of the, that braided funding? That some of it's coming here, some of it's coming here? So that is where we're only being part?
That is exactly. Tammy, Sunita?
On this page, what is included, just a couple of slides ago, it says that, one of the bullet points says continuous improvement model. How do we assess the success of the model to make adjustments in the future?
We're kind of at our first go-around, right? Like, we've made some real modest adjustments to, that have been reaction primarily to the, to the pandemic. What we're doing this year will be our first look at what, what changes should we make to the model? Or can we make to the model and what are the implications of that? And how will we measure that down the road? So those are exactly the questions that we were wrestling at, at 2:30 this afternoon.
Okay, so you don't have the criteria yet? Okay, great. Thank you.
Sunita?
When we did the budget, we did it at 10.1 and it came out at 10.2. And we decided we will put some of that money to middle schools also, right?
Well, we didn't change any of our funding. The only thing that's really significantly changed since, since we adopted the budget is exactly what came out from Dr. Baldarris in terms of classified staffing, both at the kinder level and the special education area. So those are the two changes that have been made. Otherwise, those dollars have, have been there and they've been reflected. I don't know if you recall in our financial update each month, we updated the financial update saying we're going to get a little more revenue from the state. That accounted for that 10-1 going to 10-2. And where we are on the expenditure side is we're still below, where we thought, below our budget due to hiring and other issues that we've had getting the year started. So we have what we budgeted and then we have what's actually going on. And, and I think, as you mentioned, Dr. Pauder, you had the question of, hey, are those accounted for in this presentation tonight? And no, they're not yet, right? Like, we have not said what the implications are of those hirings. So, and we're going to watch that, right? We'll watch that over the coming months and it'll begin to weave its way and make its way into our forecasts so that we can give you the best possible information as we move along throughout the year.
I'm wondering, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just had that $1 million for middle school.
We did. We did that. We had that in ESER. So we did that. We did additional, an intentional lowering of class size at middle school. So you're spot on. We did do that. It wasn't tied to the 10-2, but we did do that million-dollar investment. You are absolutely correct. This is the second year of that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wondering, I, I don't remember. I know that staff heard about the increase for sped and other, I don't, as a parent, I can't remember if I got that in parents' group or not. I don't know if we could kind of just briefly touch on what we did or what was done.
Yes, absolutely. We, we made some really bold additions to support the needs in schools around special education para supports. Those are classified positions. In addition to some para one classified positions to support at the kinder level in general ed. So that is in direct response to feedback that we've heard with our association partners in labor management meetings. We've heard comments in public comment at board meetings. I'm sure you have all heard various stories of, of some of the challenges that are happening in our schools. And those multiple para supports, those para FTE are directly to support in those ways. And we're excited about the possibilities there.
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for your patience. I know this was a long one and a lot to go through and a lot to digest, but hopefully it's been worth your time and I'll turn it back over to you.
As I turn it off. I don't know if Dr. Baldarris, is there something you want to say?
No, so this is the first part of several conversations with the board regarding budget. I know that when we, at Budget Committee, you'll get another round. And it takes, for those board members that are new, this takes years to understand. The, it's just a complex, it's Gadsby, Garabin County. It's Garabin County. It just takes a long time to understand all the different strands of work. And now with the state having so many encumbered dollars, I call them categoricals. It's, 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 there's different buckets that are going to continue to increase. So again, I appreciate the patience. We're always here available for you. If you have questions, concerns, you know, Mike's available, Jessica's available to answer. We'll sit down with you one-on-one, go deeper in any, anything you want. Because again, I think this is, then, one of the, one of the four buckets that the board's responsible for is budget. So you, we want to make sure that there's clarity with that with you. So we're available anytime to talk about this.
And I, I know that Sunita and I had met with Mike because had a lot of, our budget, amazing accountant on our leadership team here. And so she had all these questions. I'm like, yeah, let's ask. And so initially, earlier on this year, we, we brought all the questions to you and you kind of did a, an earlier version of this for us to understand as leadership, where the money was coming. And we had lots of comments and questions. And then you have added, like responded to all of those on top of that and brought it to, we thought it was really important to bring it to the whole new board or all of us really, because I continue to learn. And so I really appreciate the work and time that you and your team have put on, onto this because it's helped us really make this information clearer. And the graphs, like we said, were like easy to understand for us that likes a graph, but you also have the words. So just thank you very much for all this information and your hard work. I also wanted to, before we close out, thank Sarah Wayland and welcome Sarah. She's our new executive assistant and she's been plugging away at all these different questions and like big, steep learning curve with all of us coming at her all in from different directions. So we really wanted to welcome you and appreciate you being here and all the work that happens behind the scenes for all of this to happen here. So thank you very much for that. And thank you all for the discussion today. With, we've completed our study session and we'll take a brief break before beginning our executive session in the next room. The November 14th study session of the Beaverton School Board is hereby adjourned at 7:50.